At this time, I'd like to call our regular scheduled board meeting the order. Let the record reflect that it is Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, and the village clock has at 8:01 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Deputy Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Glatz.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
Present, thank you. Item number one, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to consider approval of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you. Item number two, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to consider approval of minutes of these special village board meetings that was held on February 18th, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item three, is somebody reading for preparing or are you?
Consider adopting Resolution 2020-R-021, recognizing the Tinley Park Bobcat's seventh grade cheerleading team and its achievements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The Tinley Park Bobcat's seventh grade C Division won first place at the 2019 Illinois Recreational Cheer Association State Competition on December 8th, 2019. This resolution is eligible for adoption. Laura, would you read the resolution?
Sure.
Thank you.
Resolution 2020-R-021, a resolution recognizing the Tinley Park Bobcat cheerleading team on their achievements. Whereas the seventh grade Division C team finished their spectacular year, closing the winning season, first place at the 2019 Illinois Recreational Cheer Association State Competition on December 8th at the Seer Center in Hoffman Estates. And now, therefore be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook and Will County, Illinois, that March 3rd, 2020 be designated Tinley Park Bobcat Cheerleading Day in the Village of Tinley Park in recognition of the cheer recreational Division C seventh grade Bobcat cheerleading team and urge all citizens to join together and congratulate the Bobcat cheerleading team on their achievements. Be it further resolved that the following seventh grade Division C Bobcat cheerleading team members be recognized. Madeline Bolson, Gianna Callahan, Anna Cornfield, Michaela Crowe, Maya Culbertson, Brianna Domshell, Madison Davis, Nora Dykman, Abby Estes, Kendall Ficaro, Addison Guerrero, Gabriella Jagelski, Amber Curick, Bren Lacy, Madison Monreal, Jaden Nelson, Megan Oberholz, Ava Phillips, Mallory Rack, Maribel Ramos, Giselle Rodriguez, Carly Sempic, Michaela Sembes, Head Coach Don Lacy, Assistant Coach Brendan Nelson, Assistant Coach Melissa Crowe, Junior Coaches Carolyn Roney, Amaya Lacy, and Peyton Nelson, adopted this third day of March, 2020.
Come on in.
Come on up here, Bill. You might have to come from here and we'll have to chase all your parents and friends. And then, we can invite the coach, coaches, if you'd like to say a couple of words about the squad this year, and then, we'll turn it over for some photos. Who would like to speak on behalf of the cheer squad?
Thank you for having us. I just want to say, coaches, thank you for all you did for these girls. Girls, you performed awesome. These girls competed in six competitions this season. They won all six, first place. Which then brought them to winning state as well. So, they're amazing performers and we're just very proud of them, so thank you.
Paul, do you want to stand behind the back? Can you get all of us from the top or do you want us to go down? What's that little board member standing behind? And then, should we do a number one?
Have one where you're all looking this way.
Awesome, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a cheer? Can we get a cheer?
Is there a performance?
Cheer, one cheer.
Let's hear it. We did keep them up there. It is, it's live, too, so, we are live. So, don't screw up.
Thanks for coming in. Congratulations.
Congratulations, girls.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Dave, you should just stay where you're at.
You got one more. There's one more.
Alright, well, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I gave out some false information. I said that was going to be live, that little cheer. Fortunately, we're having some technical difficulties, and I think we're going to be operational here in a moment, so, once I get the green light, we're going to invite the fifth graders in here and hopefully they wow us just like the seventh graders did. So, let's just take a quick second, allow our IT guy to get this thing up and running, and then, we'll pick it up with more cheering. Is the building going to put you on top of the pyramid this time, or what?
You're going to be down there and catch me?
Jeez, keep jumping up like that, I mean, come on.
Oh, yeah.
They're going to put Curtis' fifth in, I mean, that's an annuals, I'm ready alert.
Alright, so, we're back, and again, I just want to, for those that are following along
at home, apologize for the technical difficulties we had here with our, well, not so newly installed any more cameras, but our, we had audio recording. Well, that's, thank God, because you didn't see Bill jump up in the air. Bill Brady. So...
For those who missed it, too bad, it's not even on the film.
That's what I said, thank God. For your benefit, of course. So, we'll continue with our board meeting this evening. Without further ado, we'll either read item four, excuse me, for a motion to consider adopting Resolution, pardon me, I'm reading Trustee Glatz's item.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, thank you, I'm sorry, sir. I'd ask for a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2020-R-022, recognizing the Tinley Park Bobcat fifth grade cheerleading team on its achievements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded?
Think you have to watch Bill jumping up and down your...
My, yeah, I'm all over the board now. So much excitement. It's different for a Tuesday night. So, the Tinley Park Bobcat fifth grade Division C cheerleading team won third place at the 2019 Illinois Recreational Cheer Association State Champion, State Competition on December 8th of 2019, and I would like to turn it over to our deputy clerk to read all the wonderful names into the record as the third place recreational cheer association competition champions.
Resolution 2020-R-022, a resolution recognizing the Tinley Park Bobcat cheerleading team on their achievements. Whereas, the fifth grade Division C team finished their spectacular year, closing the winning season, third place at the 2019 Illinois Recreational Cheer Association State Competition on December 8th at the Seer Center in Hoffman Estates. Now therefore be it resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook and Will County, Illinois, that March 3rd, 2020 be designated Tinley Park Bobcat Day in the Village of Tinley Park in recognition of the cheer recreational Division C fifth grade Bobcat cheerleading team and urge all citizens to join together and congratulate the Bobcat cheerleading team on their achievements. Be it further resolved that the following fifth grade Division C Bobcat cheerleading team members be recognized. Chloe Andriana, Kaylee Bosco, Zoe Carrenza, Emma Krieger, Ava Crady, Liliana Crowe, Emily Deutsch, Paige Fishback, Anisa Huisen, Lucille Gutzinger, Michaela Gose, Anna Haas, Cody Hampton, Haley Jenkins, Reese Croon, Victoria Langert, Alexandra Owens, Chloe Petraeus, Lacey Schlopp, Riley Time, Madeline Zoo, and Coaches Danielle Gose and Bridgette Rapsierda, Junior Coaches Emily Jones and Abby Bosco, adopted this third day of March, 2020.
Congratulations, come on down. We want to give you the same opportunity that the seventh graders had. We'd invite one of the spokespersons, if you'd like, from the squad to talk to us about your season, and certainly, the competition, and the wonderful accomplishment the girls had at the state competition.
We're super proud of the girls, they worked really hard this season. We went a lot further than we thought we did, but the girls worked hard, and, you know, we're just really proud of them.
They did a great job this year, and we're looking forward to next year, girls.
Awesome. Do you want to ask the question there, Trustee Brady?
Are your girls, could you do a cheer for us?
Let's say cheese real quick.
Want to get the board behind her again?
Want to put the trophy, get the trophy to one of the girls?
Let's do one more, one more picture, we'll get the board members behind you. Alright, so, the floor is yours, let's hear what you've got.
Everybody do the Bobcat rumble, everybody do the Bobcat rumble, everybody rumble. Everybody do the Bobcat rumble, everybody do the Bobcat rumble, everybody rumble.
Well, congratulations again, thank you so much for coming out and sharing the trophy and the cheer with the board.
Thanks very much.
And congratulations to all you girls, and certainly, all the parents and coaches. Just getting into the sporting field with my kids, and I can tell you the dedication that parents have for you guys, to bring you practice and all these competitions. So, word of encouragement, keep up the good work, keep up your grades, and hopefully, we'll see you back here next year. How does that sound?
See you next year.
Awesome. Alright, thanks for coming out tonight, girls, we appreciate it.
Brady's gonna do a cartwheel.
Yeah.
Bill, you gotta do a cartwheel. Follow him out.
Call Kurt first.
I can do a cartwheel, but I want to keep on going, I won't be back.
So, not that those items weren't extremely important, they certainly were, it's time to get down to the village business, and we'll move on to item five, Trustee Glatz.
Tinley Park Business Spotlight, guys, could you come to the podium? So, for this evening's Business Spotlight segment, please join me in welcoming Sayed Albana. He's the owner of two businesses in Tinley Park. Mr. Rico Loco, located at 7150 West 183rd Street, is a delightful dessert shop that serves fresh fruit, Mexican-inspired desserts, crepes, homemade ice cream, and more, a few doors down, where I go. At 7164 West 183rd Street, you'll find Stax Breakfast, Brunch and Lunch Cafe. Stax features an extensive menu, featuring everything from omelets, benedicts, and skillets, to sandwiches, salads, and wraps. I only have the pancakes, that's all I go there. Please join me and welcome Sayed.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you for inviting us out and recognizing us, we appreciate it, and... My name's Niall, I'm the brother-in-law of Sayed, he owns, and I help him operate the Stax locations, which we have in Tinley Park. We also have one in Chicago Heights, and we have our Mr. Rico Loco location. As you all know, Stax, we actually previously, we were part of the Agony. I don't know if you guys remember that over there, 183rd and Harlem.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, we were part, we were with them for a few years. And actually, you know, their direction that they were going with it, which was, it was great, but we just wanted to do something that was kind of like our own, our own thing, so we actually went our separate ways, and that's how we came up with Stax.
We're no longer a franchise.
Yeah, so, we're no longer a franchise, we're actually a locally family-owned restaurant.
Great. Can you tell us more about this Mr. Rico Loco? I gotta tell a little backstory here, so, my wife now, for the last, we'll call it week and a half, two weeks, has been talking about this because she sees it all over Facebook.
Yep, so...
She mentioned something, do you guys serve tacos there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we actually...
Well, yeah, we recent, we specialize, we make homemade ice cream, homemade popsicles, and desserts, and it's, we recently, we've been adding to the menu, and we recently added tacos, tortas, make, pretty much make your own bowl, make your own, you create your own taco, create your own burrito, create your own torta, create your own nachos.
Okay, so, I have to admit, she was right then, because I said they were just doing desserts there, and clearly, I'm wrong, so...
The whole dessert side, actually, since we've opened, it's been real popular, you know, and it's also, it's a seasonal business, so it's really great in the summer, and it's something that we, it gained a lot of popularity, and then, through customer feedback, people coming in, we decided to expand our menu, something, you know, that's good for all seasons. So, and then, that's when we actually inputted the taco, burrito, torta, nachos, and so, we have all different options.
We're working on a food truck, too, right now, but that's gonna take some time, we're hopefully, come summertime, we hope the food truck will be ready where we could serve ice cream.
Word of advice, talk to building department before you make any large acquisitions, otherwise, you'd be emailing the board.
Yeah.
So, speak to Kimberly. Not to discourage you, by any means, I encourage you 100%, but...
The village clerk was going to do the reading for Rico, she loves going there, that's one of her favorite places, Stax was mine, but she couldn't be here, so that's why I took both.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, I really, I mean, I like Agony, but Stax is awesome, too, because now, you guys, your menu is a little bit more customized now, so it's...
Yeah, we definitely, we, and that's another reason, like, we really wanted to do our own, our own thing, is we were able to expand the menu.
Yeah.
Give a lot more options, and now, we, on top of that, we're trying to get creative with our seasonal special menus, and, like, for example, as of, right now, we have a few specials that we just started, it's like our peach cobbler, French toasts, our chicken chorizo skillet, our bariola waffle, and we also, we actually have a lent menu that we started, too.
Oh, nice.
Fried fish sandwich, fried tacos, and fish and chips.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Can't wait.
Continued success, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll see you over at Ricky Loco, or Rico Loco, soon, apparently, especially after watching the video, she's going to be dragging me there. Looking forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Could do like the shark taking the front samples.
I know, that's what I think you gotta do.
Like a cheese armor or something.
Alright, item six, Trustee Glatz.
We're having a whole world of world issues this evening.
So, we're, I mean, we have the, obviously, the recording for the clerk's office, we're going to be okay, okay, sorry, you can continue. Item six.
I'd like to make a motion to consider appointing Stephen Fister to the position of maintenance technician.
Second.
Thank you.
The village conducted a recruitment to fill the vacancy of maintenance technician in our public works department. This position vacancy was approved at mid-year budget on January 7th, 2020. A total of 64 applicants were received, been reviewed, and shortened to four. Interviews were conducted by a panel of public works and human resources management staff, and Stephen Fister was identified as the most qualified candidate for this position. Mr. Fister is a graduate of Providence Catholic High School, and earned a Bachelor of Science degree at Calumet College of St. Joseph. Most recently, he has worked part-time for dylan maintenance and snow removal, worked as a part-time EMT at Vital Ambulance, and his prior experience, working summers at Mokena Public Works. As an electrician assistant at Gulf Shore Electric in Florida, Mr. Fister also served as an infantryman in the Army National Guard for six years. Consider appointing Stephen Fister to the position of maintenance technician, effective tomorrow, March 4th of 2020.
Thank you, Trustee Glatz. Mr. Fister, step forward, sir. You're about to get voted in. Any questions from the board?
Why did you leave Florida?
Just be closer to family, my family's still here, so...
Number one reason.
Couldn't get them to go to you?
I wish.
And, since I have you at the moment, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Call a roll, please.
Trustee Berg? Yes. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
The motion will carry, and Mr. Fister, you will be an employee of the Village of Tinley Park starting tomorrow, so, the floor is yours right now, if you'd like to introduce yourself to the world.
Sure.
Apparently, we don't have audio, so...
Okay, no pressure, then. So, I just want to say real quick, thank you to everyone that helped me throughout the hiring process. I'm extremely thankful for the opportunity to work for the village, and I'm also excited to be a Tinley Park resident. I'm looking forward to getting to know everybody in the, up in the next few months, and I can't wait to get started tomorrow morning, so...
There you go, welcome aboard, we really appreciate it. Thank you. I'm sure you'll do as well.
Welcome.
You can go to Rico Loco if you want on your way.
You actually don't have to stay for the meeting if you don't like, but it's encouraged, get a little knowledge of what's going on, but if you want to take your significant other out to dinner and enjoy the, enjoy the moment.
Maybe they're going to local.
There's two, two locations that are available for you.
She's on with some pancakes at Stax.
Alright, alright. Have a good night, we'll see you at work. Alrighty, thank you. Item seven, this time, I'd ask for a motion to consider approval of the following consent agenda items. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded. Madam Deputy Clerk, can you read these into the record, please?
Sure. Consider request from Tinley Park Firefighters Association to conduct a raffle on Saturday, March 28th, 2020, at Sound Growler Brewing Company, 8201 183rd Street, with the maximum value of the prize not to exceed $600. Winners will be drawn at Sound Growler Brewing Company that day. B, consider Resolution 2020-R-019, approving a five-foot utility easement at Sip Wine Bar, 17427 Oak Park Avenue. C, consider proclaiming March 2020 as Certified Government Financial Manager Month in the Village of Tinley Park. And D, consider payment of outstanding bills in the amount of $1,255,159.23, as listed on the vendor board approval report stated February 21st and February 28th, 2020.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Does any board member care to remove any of these items from consent? Let the record reflect, there is none. Brad, I assume you're the Certified Government Financial Manager of the month?
I am.
Oh, congratulations. This is an important month for you. We'll call a roll on this, please.
Trustee Berg? Yes. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry, thank you. Item eight, Trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance 2020-O-013, approved in the official 2019 Tinley Park zoning map.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Per the Illinois Municipal Code, municipalities must adopt an official zoning map by March 31st of each year. No properties are being rezoned as part of the adoption of the official zoning map. It is only reflecting changes and corrections completed during the previous year. The Plan Commission reviewed the draft of the 2019 official zoning map on February 20th, 2020, and voted seven to zero to unanimously recommend approval to this board. The ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Is there any questions regarding the zoning map? We'll let the record reflect, there's none, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg? Yes. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry, thank you. Item nine, Trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting Resolution 2020-R-023, authorizing a professional services agreement between the Village of Tinley Park and Stern Brothers &amp; Co. for tax incentive finance feasibility study and related services for proposed 159th and Harlem TIF district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This agreement will provide for professional services for TIF feasibility study, preparation of a redevelopment plan, and adoption of the project in the development of a TIF tax increment finance district for the proposed 159th and Harlem TIF in the amount of $38,000. The initial phase of the agreement provides for a TIF feasibility study, which will enable the village board to determine if it would like to continue and implement the TIF district. If the village does not proceed, the contract will end at the feasibility stage, with no further commitment to the village. Founded in 1917, Stern is a certified women-owned business enterprise and is one of a few remaining independent private investment banking and financial services firms in the country. The principle on this engagement has been involved in the creation or amendment of all villages' prior and existing TIFs. This agreement was discussed at the Community Development Committee meeting held on February 25th, 2020. This resolution is also eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments from the board?
When will we discuss the, the map for the locations for this TIF?
I think that was part of phase one, right?
Yeah, once we'll get into draft work from them, then.
Can you, can you give a, just a really quick synopsis of the process regarding this, Brad, regarding the implementation of a new TIF? I know there's, I know there's quite the process.
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of steps, but the initial, the initial step is making a determination whether the proper, whether the area will qualify, meet the qualifications under the statutes to qualify as a TIF. We have, we've...
We have, we've identified the tentative area that we would like to include as part of the Tiff, and, and a map of that, that's basically, um, both sides of Harlem Avenue from roughly 163rd Street to 159th, and then, uh, going, going east to, to Oak Park Avenue.
Could, how about you talk a little bit about the formation of the, the actual group of individuals that sit on the panel for?
Well, so, like I say, with, after the feasibility study, and we choose to move forward, then, uh, we will, we would convene a, a meeting of the joint review board, which has got a representative of, of every taxing district that overlays onto the properties included in the Tiff. Um, this, the proposed Tiff would include properties in both Orland Township and Rich Township, or, I'm sorry, Orland Township and Bremen Township, um, so, uh, but uniquely, it is both, uh, all the entire territory is within School District 146 for the grade school, and School District 230 for the high school, which is, uh, the, it's, it's an unusual pairing for most of the community. And then, of course, Park District, library, board, um.
Community member?
Community college, and a community member that the board will have to select, uh, to participate. Um, normally, the community member would be someone who resides within the district. We don't have any residential properties within the proposed district, uh, so you would choose somebody, most likely you'd choose somebody that operated a business within it.
And who would be the czar of the, so to speak, of the joint review board?
Um, we would, we would elect someone to chair that meeting, and typically, we.
The staff would elect that, or the board would elect?
Well, actually, the, the joint review board would elect the chair.
Fair enough.
And that's usually our.
And, those are public meetings, correct?
Those are public meetings, and, and usually, uh, usually, our representative is elected as the chair.
Got it, any other questions?
And then what, and then the joint review board, um, will review the propose, the proposal, uh, provide a recommendation back to the board, uh, as to, as to their, as to their position on, on moving it forward. And then the board takes its action to, to continue to move it forward, there's a, there's a public hearing, and, or actually, a meeting, not a public hearing, about, uh, and then you have, uh, the series of, the meetings to, the series of ordinances to, to adopt.
Got it, thank you.
One thing I would add to your map, um, you said you're going all the way to Oak Park Avenue?
Yes.
By any chance, 'cause Tinley End's right there across the street, with development going on at Delta Sonic. Have you thought about maybe, so you can grab some increment, maybe going across the street? Because there's no sidewalks that go, once you get to that light, all the way east to Delta Sonic, there's absolutely no sidewalks. And so if you, if you, I'm sorry? So, well, not in the area of Trinity, at the church, there's no sidewalk, so if you did add that, not only would you probably pick up some increment from Delta Sonic, but maybe you could also have that pay in for the free sidewalk, too, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Possible.
If you wouldn't mind looking at.
I can share those additional pins with, with our consultant, with Maureen, and see if, if, if it, if it, again, if it's deemed qualified, eligible, uh, then certainly we can, we can, you know, we can refine, refine our anticipated boundaries.
It's just a thought, if you agree, that's all.
I will certainly have a look.
Cause there's no sidewalks there.
I will certainly have a look at it.
Thanks, Brad.
And you are correct, you know, we, we've also included, uh, the vacant property, um, on the west side of Harlem, south of the former Kmart, um, to provide us exactly that type of opportunity where we could spend Tiff monies towards building that, that sidewalk that we would like to have to join between the shopping areas and 157th Street.
Perfect, thanks.
Does any other board member care to comment regarding item nine?
I think I've commented enough.
I've already vote counted it, and I have you tabulated as a no, but that's okay, um.
Yeah, well.
This is an expenditure funds.
I just want a number five, you know, it's the second one in three years for me, so it seems like a, they're too, just too much.
Uh, expenditure funds, anybody from the, uh, public care to comment, excuse me, nope, call the roll, please.
Trustee Berg?
No.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry, thank you, item 10, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider directing staff to move forward with the appropriate zoning, taxing, and licensing changes to allow for adult-use cannabis dispensaries in the village of Tinley Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
This item was discussed earlier at the committee of the whole meeting, uh, prior to this meeting. Uh, consider directing staff to move forward with the appropriate zoning, taxing, licensing changes to allow adult-use cannabis dispensaries in the village of Tinley Park.
Okay, is there anything that needs to be added to the record, I know this was discussed pretty thoroughly in Cowell, but does anybody else from the board have any comments or opinions they'd like to add to the record for the board? If not, um, anybody from the public care to comment regarding this? Very good, we'll move for a roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
No.
Trustee Brennan?
No.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Uh, that motion will carry, thank you, item 11, trustee Brady.
I'd like to have a motion considering adopting resolution 2020-R-024 approving the strategic plan for 2020 to 2025.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
The strategic planning process kicked off in September with the selection of management partners as the village's consultant. Throughout October and November, the board, senior staff, employee groups, and members of the business community worked with management partners to provide input. Feedback was also gathered from the recent citizen survey. The process resulted in the creation of a village vision statement, a mission statement, and values in addition to the identified goals and tragedies. The strategic plan, along with the implementation action plan, will provide the board and staff with direction for the upcoming years. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting on January 14, on 2020. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, trustee Brady, um, does anybody from the board care to comment regarding the strat plan for 2020 to 2025? Again, thanks for your participation in that exercise, um, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 opposed, that resolution, well, carry, thank you. Item 12, trustee Glatz.
I would like to make a motion to consider adopting resolution 2020-R-026, approving a contract between the village of Tinley Park and Baxter and Woodman for LaGrange Road Utilities. Design Services Engineering Amendment Number One Marriott Development.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
The previously approved design services agreement with Baxter and Woodman was in the amount of $78,400. The additional cost for the design services for the realignment will be $23,000. Amendment Number One is the amount of $23,000 for additional design services for the sewer and water main. This resolution's eligible for adoption.
Thank you, any board member care to comment regarding the expenditure funds for the amendment?
Was it okay to skip the action discussion?
Beg your pardon?
Well, we read the subject, and then Mike went right down to previously approved.
Uh, he just, he surmised.
Oh, okay, didn't know if we had anything legal there.
No, that's just a discussion, he was just giving us, a general summary. So, no other board members care to comment, this is an expenditure funds, anyone from the public care to comment? Let the record reflect, there's none, please call the roll.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry, thank you, item 13, trustee Glatz.
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting resolution 2020-R-027, approving a contract between the village of Tinley Park and Baxter and Woodman for LaGrange Road Utilities. Lift station design services Marriott Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. This design services agreement with Baxter and Woodman consulting engineers includes the preparation of plans, construction specifications, engineer's opinion, opinions of probable cost, permits, and bidding assistance for lift station in the amount of $63,750. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, any board member care to comment regarding the expenditure funds? And anyone from the public care to comment regarding this? Let the record reflect, there's none, please call the roll.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, item 14.
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting resolution 2020-R-028, approving a contract between the village of Tinley Park and Baxter and Woodman for LaGrange Road Utilities. Construction Services Marriott Development.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Additional services are listed in the agreement, the construction service agreement with Baxter and Woodman is in the amount of $79,750. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Does anyone care to comment from the board regarding this expenditure funds? Anyone from the public care to comment? Let the record reflect, there is none, and please call the roll.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry, this is a good night for Baxter and Woodman, huh? They're making a lot of money, um, trustee Glatz.
Should make a move here, they're doing something for it. Make a motion to consider adopting resolution 2020-R-029, approving a, a contract between the village of Tinley Park and Baxter and Woodman for LaGrange Road Utilities. Lift station construction services Marriott Development.
Second.
Seconded, thank you.
Thank you, additional services are listed in the agreement above. The construction services agreement with Baxter and Woodman is in the amount of $60,950.
Uh, very good, this is eligible for adoption, expenditure funds, any board member care to comment? Anybody from the public care to comment? Let the record reflect, there's none, madam deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion will carry, thank you, trustee Galante.
Thank you, um, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting ordinance 2020-0-014, amending Title 11 of the Tinley Park Municipal Code and adding Title.
Title nine.
Nine.
Title 11, sorry.
Eleven, um, Chapter 129J entitled Self-Storage Accommodations Tax.
Second.
Thank you, uh, the ordinance creates a self-storage accommodations, accommodations tax imposed, imposing a tax of 5% on the gross rental of lease, or lease charge of self-storage facilities in Tinley Park, effective, is it May 1st? May 1, 2020, and this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, um, any board member care to comment regarding this item?
Yes, I would like to, um, if I get myself understanding this, person that goes out and they work and they buy a boat, they buy an SUV, or a, I'm sorry, a jet ski, or they, uh, able to afford a snowmobile, and they pay taxes for it on then, and then you have to register it with the state, and that's every three years, and then you have to pay a motor fuel tax, and that's on their, their equipment, and then they have to get license plates, and they get charged for that, too. So, they're really taxed a lot, just because now, I gotta store this, I gotta put it away, uh, for the winter time, unfortunately. And I'm taxed again because I have to have a place to put it. Now, a neighbor of mine has a fire, and what items that they have, that they gotta keep and put away in storage, uh, we're gonna tax them because they had to use a storage area. Grandma dies, I gotta clear out all her furniture, all her stuff, and put it in storage, and I'm gonna get charged because of that. I, I just think, you know, the people that are using these things are taxed a lot.
Do we know, can we identify the location, or is there a stor, where's the storage facility?
There's two of them.
There's two of them. There's two storage facilities on 159th Street, they're next door to each other.
Oh, yeah, by auto road, by the high retention line, okay. Uh, for some reason, I was thinking the one in Harlem, that's Orland Park, though, so.
Right.
Yeah, and again, the thinking behind it is obviously businesses around that pay sales tax, a significant one, but businesses like this don't really pay any.
Yeah, but the businesses aren't paying for this tax, are they? The people that are buying the storage unit is paying for it, as they paid for everything else.
It's.
It's gonna be baked into the rate, I'm sure.
Oh, sure.
See, I was under the impression that this was a, careful how I phrase this, a tool to combat against that type of development within a community. I, I don't disagree with what trustee Brady just mentioned, I mean, it seems as though here you have a situation where we're just kinda taxing, we're blanket taxing the universe on any and everything that we could possibly think of. That's all my own, my own two cents on it, certainly, it's up for, I think it's up for debate, so.
And I think as trustee Galante read this, it says April 1st, but the first reading that I saw on Friday said May 1st.
Yeah, it's May 1st, that's what, I read it.
The, the, the agenda had referenced May 1st, actually, the committee had referenced May 1st, but as we, as Douglas and I were drafting the ordinance, it's like, wait a minute, April 1st, if we adopted today, you know, here we are, March 4, March 3, we adopted today, um, for us to get the forms together and get notification to the affected parties, um, uh, it's, it's too short of a period of time.
So you do need May 1st.
So we do need May 1st, at, at, at a minimum, May 1st.
I just thought you wanted to move it up sooner to tax them sooner.
No, 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 we're actually moving it back, uh, moving, or moving it forward, uh, from, from April 1st to, to May 1st. And like I say, it's, at a minimum, at a minimum, May 1st, it's got, it could be later than that if you wanted.
How many times has this topic been discussed in Tinley Park as a, as a potential tax?
Um, I think it came up a few years. I know, we talked about it on, on one occasion.
Obviously, with just that one, do we know the, what's the size of that facility and storage units, and what are we projecting? I'm sure we've had a bud, I'm sure we could put together a number for what the budget would, what we'd be budgeting with this potential tax.
I don't know that I've, I've taken. I don't know the number, we could find out certainly a number, yes, but just two facilities right next to each other.
Some of this conversation was stemmed, we've been, um, inundated, but we've had several storage facilities, and they're looking to occupy high-traffic areas, which is in far retail, so that was some of the conversation that stemmed. If these uses are seeking these older shopping centers, what is an offset to at least?
I know, that's why, that's why I mentioned that, but I, I mean, I ultimately don't have zoning to that, I mean.
That was part of the conversation that, that generated the, you know, the current conversations, is, is this demand, this demand, if you will, or interest in looking to occupy, say, for example, the old Kmart building?
Right.
Or other retail locations, and we wanted, there was, you know, that this type of thing could, that could secondarily be a tool to help minimize.
But if the builder, or contractor, the owner, that wants to put in another Joe Blow storage area, you think that will stop him, just because he's gonna take that 5% and put it on to the, to the, his customers? It's not gonna affect him either, are?
Well, I think it, 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 it may change the, uh, the demand, I mean, I, I would certainly think that somebody that would be looking at pricing those out, you know, the consumer would be pricing them out.
Right.
They would just go to a different town, if it's not an inconvenience for them to pay a lesser amount, right? I mean, I, so I mean, the developer, the, the, the project, whomever that might be, I think they would probably have to take that into consideration because it's just general demand, you know?
Okay.
So, I, I think that, I mean, it's, it's two points here, you have the conversation of using it as a tool to, to control the development of self-storage facilities.
When zoning do that?
But then you have the humanitarian element of it, that you're now taxing, taxing the world, over everything.
And it's, it's, it's an equity argument, too, I mean, and you're having these businesses that potentially replacing retail stores where there's 10% sales tax, I mean, it's. Or nearly 10%. Yeah, 10%, so it's not, it's really, I think it's not a lot on the playing field.
Was this? Where was this discussed at?
Finance committee.
Finance committee.
What was the recommendation out there, I mean, usually in our discussion item, it says what the decision was.
Three oh.
Three oh.
Was it debated at all?
Yes.
This doesn't apply to pods or anything that you would put on, place on your property, though, correct?
No.
No, it's, it's physically located.
We permit those, and there's a limited time you can have them on your property.
Okay, and then other municipalities, have they enacted a similar?
Oh, yeah, and some of these, um, storage facilities that I talk to, they, they ask, you know, do you guys have a, a tax? Because it's kind of common, they're accustomed to paying that, knowing when they're taking prime retail space. Um, many of them see that as a, hey, well, you know, we'll, we'll pay the tax if we can be in this location.
And this one really isn't a prime location already, so we might as well, I felt that it was fair. Um, also, these pods, I don't think they're in that, this is just a regular storage facility, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I think that's why we decided it would be equitable, if you will.
Okay.
Brad, do you know if the one on, uh, the big one on, uh, Cicerone also, if they have a tax?
Also doesn't.
Says Elsa.
Okay, um, we'll call a roll on this, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
No.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item seventeen, trustee Brennan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting Resolution two zero two zero dash R dash zero two five for a police multi-jurisdictional task force agreement.
Sir, a second.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Mike. This is an agreement to provide police services in multiple jurisdictions, this resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, trustee Brennan. Uh, any comments from the board? Any questions for the chief regarding this item? I know we discussed it in Cow, pretty standard, set forth, so, um, we'll call, the roll call, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion will carry. Item eighteen, um, at this time, I'd ask for motion to consider a motion to reconsider adopting ordinance number two thousand twenty dash O dash zero one two, amending Title eleven of Chapter one twelve, Section one twelve dot twenty, um, of the K of Chapter two of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, Class K one license.
Second.
First, go ahead. This is, this item is a motion to reconsider. Uh, per Robert's rules, a motion reconsider can only be brought by the prevailing side of the original motion. So, since you brought the motion in the last meeting, and the motion failed, you would be ineligible to bring the motion at this time.
Okay.
Policy is, you know, if you lose the motion at one meeting, you can't just keep bringing it again and again until the end.
Yeah.
So, it'd have to be any other board trustee member who was at the last meeting would be able to make this motion.
All right, so I understand there's gonna be a motion to table the item, so who would like to make the motion to table?
I'll make that motion, I'll make a motion to table item number eighteen indefinitely.
Indefinitely, you're said to a certain meeting.
Um, I think...
I think it has to be to a certain meeting, doesn't it?
And you can table it to indefinitely if you want.
Past practice has been a certain date, so we're gonna keep that, will be the next date.
But it isn't his motion? It's his motion. It's not yours. You can pick which one you want indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Motion for an indefinite table of this item.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded, uh, let the record reflect that past practice in Tinley Park, it's not been done that way, and I will call for a roll. A call, a roll call for the tabling of the item.
Trustee Berg.
Abstain.
Trustee Brady.
No.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Let the record reflect, this is the first time in the history of Tinley Park, an item that failed in committee was moved to the board level, and then an item that failed again at the board level was introduced for a second time. Um, yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Uh, so the motion to table is, passes, uh, I think I have four, one, one, right? Is that right?
Four, one and abstain.
Yeah, four votes in the positive or the affirmative, one no, one abstention.
One abstain.
All right, uh, item nineteen, receive comments from staff.
Yes, just a couple items, uh, one, just a reminder, next Tuesday is a special Cow to do our budget, so we...
It shouldn't.
Cancel all the committee meetings, just so we have that night for the, the whole of the budget discussion. Um, I would like to mention, um, though he will be here a few more weeks, this will be Kevin Gorkowski's last board meeting.
Wow.
Oh. Kevin, as, as we all know, has been with the village for thirty-plus years, has moved his way up through the ranks, and has really done a, a bang-up job as, as director, assistant director, and I don't know how many other titles he's had, but it's been lots. So, we'll have more farewells, but just wanted to let the board know, this is kind of a, a special night for Kevin, so, that's it.
I would just like to add that Sunday, we have a one P M. step-off for the Tinley Park Irish Parade, we'll be traveling northbound from Central Middle School to one hundred and seventy-second Street, we have just under eighty entries, and then after the parade, the Medina Highlanders Pipe and Drum Band, um, will be in Zabrocki Plaza, as well as the Wienermobile will be available for photo ops, so that should be fun. Weather's looking great, so, um, we're really looking forward to it, we've got our grand marshaless here, is Steve Delinsky, the Hungry Hound from ABC Seven, and thank you to our sponsors, that's Ken Anderson, State Farm Insurance, Lisa Thomas Salon, Window Works, and Verdoliak Law.
I'd also like to have it noted that the Boy Scouts of Troop nine-one-one, Sea Scouts of twenty-nine eleven, sponsored by the Tinley Park Police Department, decorated, uh, the village float for you all to walk alongside or ride on it, those of you that can't walk.
Anything else from staff?
I have one, one, two things, actually. Um, just, uh, uh, the clerk's office wants to remind residents that the U.S. Census is gonna be sending out their invitations, um, to respond to the twenty-twenty census, uh, to respond online, um, between March twelfth and March twentieth, so people should be looking for that in their, their mail, and the census will follow up in person to households that don't respond by April twenty-seventh, so if you haven't, if they don't respond in May, you'll get someone knocking at your door. Um, any questions, just call the clerk's office, and we can help you with it.
Thanks, Laura. Anything else from staff? Move on to item twenty, receive comments from the board.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, first and foremost, congratulations to Kevin, and thanks for all your many years of dedicated service to the village, um, you know, we'll definitely miss your leadership, so, thanks, thanks for everything. Um, on a sad or note, I'd like to, um, extend our condolences to the family of Fire Chief Forrest Reader, uh, with the passing of his father, Forrest Reader Senior. Um, I'd just like to ask all staff and residents to keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers, uh, at this, at this time, so, um, you know, if you wouldn't mind doing that, if you guys aren't religious, whatnot, but, um, our hearts go out to, to him and his family. And then, um, a final note, Dave, I, I just wanted to, in, in addition to our conversation on, um, the gaming, I, I'm aware that there is like sweepstakes machines, um, now, since we discussed the push tax tonight, um, sweepstakes machines are essentially gaming machines with no regulation, um, I'd like to see if we could, um, look into a possible ban on the sweepstakes machine, uh, if, if that, you know, if that makes sense for us.
I, I think I, I think we have some notes on that in my office, I remember looking at it about two years ago, so, let me look through them, and I'll send them over to you.
Okay, I just thought it was something we can, you know, take, take a peek at, that would, that would make sense, so...
The state's got some, there's some, from what I remember, the state's got some funny language in there that allows them, it's, it's, it's real, as, has been mentioned in the past, fuzzy, um, language, so...
Very fuzzy.
Well, uh...
And you know what, you could, um, trustee Brennan, Mayor Vanderburg, you could also probably contact Commander Tenza, I asked him to look into that before, too, and there were some issues with it.
Okay.
I don't remember what he said, but he was, uh, he looked into it a lot.
Okay.
So, maybe, maybe give, give him a, a call.
Yeah, very good. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else on the side? Board members?
I just had a couple of things, I wanted to, um, I wanted to thank the chief for continuing on with the Lock It, Lose It campaign, um, I did nothing but really positive things on social media, everybody, um, when that was happening. Uh, I also wanted to thank Public Works, uh, for my day in Public Works, I got to spend a day, um, as an employee, it was awesome, um, honestly, the organization of it, everything about the day impressed me, um, and the people, I, everybody was so, um, willing to, you know, take the time to explain things to me, so I really understood it, um, I now understand what the lift station is, and, I, I mean, I've really got a good education, it's gonna help me forever, uh, so thank you for, for allowing me to come in, John, especially you, I know you had to give up a lot of time to, to do that, but I really appreciate...
Did you write a lot of lines?
No, but I saw a lot, I saw the cameras going in, I saw them working with the other side, the vec, you know, where they were cleaning the sewer, um, how they worked from one to the other, I mean, I saw them replace a sewer, um, lid and take down some trees and all kinds of neat stuff, I really, it was really neat, I, I, I didn't know everything that was going on in that Public Works garage, um, over there, I really didn't, uh, it really gave me a good education, and I actually wanted to go through the budget again after seeing all that, just because some things that I didn't really, were so important before, I now think we have better be in this budget.
I thought you were gonna say all the trucks that just sit there, and that we, they go out once a year, I thought that's where you were going with that, all right, all right.
We don't have a lot of space, but I don't know how...
All right, all right, look at, look at the treasurer, his, his ears are starting...
That's a whole nother topic.
Diane, you're, you're not leaving me on the trolley, are you, and going to Public Works?
No, absolutely, I'm still on the trolley.
Okay.
Um, and then same to Kevin, um, you know, sad to see you go, totally understand, it's awesome, you know, years you put in here, and, uh, I think you're, you know, leaving, um, I wa-, I was really impressed, too, with just, I mean, everything you did to, to create the, um, you know, the, um, employment, like, everybody had, you know, they were explaining to me how the guy in the hole, he's the new guy, he gets, you know, and how they just really worked their way through, and, and then hearing from all the different, um, personnel that have worked in so many different areas, which really gives them, you know, makes them more valuable to us, so, it's nice that you did that and set up that, uh, everything you did was, was awesome, but that was it.
Bye, Kevin, I'll miss you terribly, haven't grown up in Brem and Tom together since we were little, now, we got to, we knew each other again, now you're gone, but you gotta take care of your family first.
Yep. I'd just like to add, Kevin, I'll start out with the sad part, the, uh, it is, it is a bad day for Tinley Park, uh, for you to retire, your institutional knowledge, I don't think many people realize how important it is to have someone that you've worked here your whole career, I mean, you've been, you're, we're firemen, you know, you've, you've seen and done everything here, and, uh, we've been lucky to have you, because with John being in the same spot, I mean, having someone like you to work with them, uh, you know, you've really shown them a lot, and most importantly, a lot of times, bosses, sometimes they're not very well-liked, you know, there's, they gotta be hard-nosed or whatever, um, 'cause if they're not, they're taken advantage of by their employees, but somehow, you were able to do both, you were able to be respected by your peers, everyone did what needed to be done, you didn't have problems, and you were still well-liked, which is, which is odd, you know?
It is odd.
Because that just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't happen at, it just doesn't happen at your level, you know, usually, there's a separation between supervision and the employees, and you were able somehow to, to do both, which is very commendable. Yep. Um, next, I, I wanna thank, uh, our staff and, and our attorneys, I mean, you guys have just been busy as can be the last couple months with budget, and these, these cows have just been massive, I can't imagine the backups and how many emails you probably got from Laura, looking for your backups, so she could get it all prepared, um, you know, all the legal work to get there, I mean, I, I, with, uh, everything has been overwhelm, overwhelming, uh, I'm sure, for staff, I, I appreciate all the work you've done, and then, uh, last, I, more of a concern, the last, uh, the last two meetings, you've had, trustee Berg, you've had to abstain on liquor votes, is that...
I've abstained to a lot of things.
Okay, so that's, is that gonna be permanent, or is that just based on each agenda for liquor, or...
Yeah, for liquor.
Okay, so for all liquor, you'll have to abstain?
Mm-hmm, liquor licenses, which are very rare, 'cause they're under the mayor's jurisdiction.
Okay, but, all right, well, if, if that's the case, could you please look into and make sure then that we don't have any problems, because we've had, uh, other votes, there wasn't, uh, didn't abstain, and now we are, I just wanna make sure we, the people that got their license or revoked it, we don't have to bring it back to the committee if everything was, uh, okay, you know, I don't know if there's a conflict, maybe, with, uh, being the, we, I think this is probably the first time it's ever happened, we, we have the municipal liquor commissioner, and now we have the Illinois State Liquor Commissioner, so I don't know if that brings a conflict.
Nope, absolutely not.
I would just, if you could just make sure that there is, isn't...
For the pass, pass liquor licenses? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, since the appointment, there's been, there's been votes as yes for licenses since you brought them forward, and now we're abstaining, so I don't know if that, if, is there something maybe...
I'm not aware, well, I certainly would, yeah, I would certainly be open to looking at that, I thought you were talking to, pre-appointment.
No, no, from, from, yeah, after the appointment, there's been, I don't know, four or five votes, I just wanna make sure that the businesses that you issue the liquor license to, there's no issues.
Yeah.
Because, because I don't know how they would, you know, I don't know, I mean, 'cause if there was a problem with a business, who do they appeal to? The, the municipal and the state, I mean, there's, could be a, I don't know, just...
No, it's all different.
I, I'll work with the attorney's office on clearly defining, um, the village's liquor control, and then the voting privileges from the board, and how that works, and...
Because I wanna make sure we have a quorum, if, if she's gonna keep, if she's gonna have to abstain, I just wanna make sure we always have a, a quorum for, for it, that's all.
And then I would, I would, if, I would think that the, the, the clearer question would be, is the abstention being done out of, out of abundance of caution, or is the abstention being done because of a specific conflict, and that, I, that needs to be flushed out in legal, not through, certainly not through the liquor commissioner's office. Anything else? Um, it was mentioned about the parade this weekend, the weather, and we're expecting, um, probably larger-than-normal crowds, simply because of the weather, I would just remind everyone that it is a family-friendly event, um, that public consumption of alcohol will not be tolerated, um, in any capacity, uh, there was a letter that was sent out from the commissioners, liquor commissioners' office to all of our, um, bar and restaurant establishments along Oak Park Avenue, um, giving them the exact same guidelines, that public consumption on public property is not gonna be tolerated, and that we, um, wanted to remind them that, uh, the, the men and women that are serving beverages need to, um, continue to, uh, enforce their basket training and not over-serve anyone, obviously, we want them to have a great time, um, but we wanna take into account this is still a family-focused and family-centered event, um, so, I hope everybody has a great time on Sunday. I would also like to just mention briefly, um, the hysteria that is circling our nation and the world, uh, surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, or whatever they're calling it at this point, um, you know, there's been a lot of information that's been disclosed amongst municipalities, and I, I know Pat Carr has been, um, in the forefront of that for Tinley Park, I just wanna, I just wanna reaffirm everyone that, um, the elected officials, the cer-, certainly the staff of Tinley are, are, um, making a point of keeping people apprised of what's going on, um, and information that's passed along will also be passed along to the public, but really, just to use common sense and to use universal precautions as it pertains to cold and flu season, and to continue to, uh, monitor situations, and